Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on September the 6th, 2023. The Bel Air Beach City Council meeting will now come to order. Tonight's invocation is given by Councilmember Frank Banker. Please give your attention to Mr. Banker.
My name is Power X. Dear God, our heavenly Father, who has given us free will to come to honor and worship you in our own, please hear our prayers. Dear God, we are given free will, and we often stray from your plan. We pray that you would give us strength to follow your plan, which will provide good works and justice for all your people. We ask that you open the eyes and hearts of your people in Bel Air Beach, give this council guidance, and serve your people the way you want, not by our own self-interests or personal gainings. We pray that all will live in peace and serve you, our Father, and you will protect our city from any harm, in all harms. We thank you for the minimal damage you asked for the storm. This storm should be seen as a message for all elected officials to protect this creation of yours in great splendor of our health. We further pray that you will protect our military, your first responders, all the ones for those who were lost in defending our freedom. We thank you for the right name for us, preserving our freedom and ability to fully worship with your Son, Jesus. In Jesus' name, your Son, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance is to the United States of America. We are the republic of which stands our nation under God, individual liberty, justice, and so on.
Patty, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingston.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
City Attorney Miranda Mora.
Present.
And Councilmember Lloyd Roberts was unable to attend.
Thank you, Patty. Our first order of business is for approval of the agenda, but I'm going to request that we make some changes. Items 13, 16, and 17 should all be listed in the public hearing section. So what I'm requesting is we move those items to that area, and then we renumber them to where items 16 and 17 are now 14 and 15, and items 14 and 15 become 16 and 17. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda? Motion to amend the agenda as proposed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second motion, Jody Shirley. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the agenda is amended. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion. Motion by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Belinda Livingston. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as amended. Now we move to citizen comments. Any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda? Please raise your hand. Wait until you're called on. We ask that you leave your comments to no more than three minutes. As usual, if any council member would like to respond, I request that you hold your responses until we reach council comments at the end of the meeting. Would any citizen like to address the council? All right, seeing as we have none, citizen comments are now closed. Item three, we have a presentation from the Phyllis County Sheriff's Office, beginning with the law enforcement monthly report.
Hello, how are you doing?
Aye.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Julie Bowman. I'm new to your city here, so nice to meet all of you. From the details of the statistics were provided to me for your month of July, I see that there was one assault and three deaths that occurred that month, and four people arrested. The majority of the arrests had to do with traffic offenses.
Any questions or comments from the council? No? You said your name is Sergeant Bowman?
Yes, first name Julie. Nice to meet you.
Very nice meeting you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're on to code enforcement monthly report. Take me from out here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, staff, and citizens, Deputy Clodger for the record. For the code enforcement for the month of August, you'll notice that 44% of my time was spent dealing with construction nuisances. And I just want to clarify something. In those nuisances, what I was doing was checking for permits, see if people had permits. If they didn't, stop work orders in their own place. Also, the big part was before the storm, the city manager gave me a list of all the houses that were under construction. What I did was I went out and inspected each of one of those sites to make sure that they were safe. We did have two that were not in compliance. So prior to the storm, I went out and I checked 12 residents. I had two that were in violation during the storm. One was cleared up, and then one was cleared up after on Gulf Boulevard. Fortunately, no damage was done from the materials that were left out there. I spoke with the homeowner, basically told him, look, you know, you have to keep this lot cleared. He understands. He lives in Georgia, and he made the trip down here because he couldn't get ahold of his contractor to clean up the lot. The other 32% dealt with lawns, weeds, brush, and then the rest of that dealt with traffic nuisances and those types of things. Now let's stand for any questions.
Questions? Any questions? I do have one. Yes, sir. There's a lot. It's an empty lot. It was a knockdown, and they never rebuilt, and it's huge. It's someplace, it's six feet high. Is anything being done about that particular lot?
Which, where is that lot at?
I believe it's on Denado.
Oh, yes, 2204?
Yes.
Yes, we did send out a notice of violation to the homeowner to get that taken care of.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that on record.
Yes, sir.
I've received multiple complaints.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all have a great evening.
You too. All right, is Phyllis Sun Coast Fire and Rescue here tonight? All right, well, let's just move on to item number five, a presentation given by Vice Mayor Shirley on behalf of the Florida League of Cities.
Recording in progress.
I can do that.
Good evening. City of Bel Air Beach announced today that Dave Gaddis, our mayor, has spent quite a bit of time studying over the last year to receive a gold certificate of excellence from the certificate program of the elected municipal officials hosted by the Florida League of Cities University. Dave received the level three. There's level one, two, and three, bronze, silver, and gold. Dave received the gold certificate of excellence after committing the last year, August 2022 to July 23. He spent earning points to receive this certificate. So on behalf of the City of Bel Air Beach, Dave, I'd like to give you the certificate of excellence.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
All right, we are on to item number six, which is another presentation from Lindsay Johansson, Florida League of Cities, excuse me, Florida League of Cities, account executive for FMIT Property and Asset Insurance Policy.
All right, well, thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Lindsay Johansson. I am the account executive for the west coast of Florida, and I do handle your insurance program that you all currently purchase through the FMIT. So this year, we have a significant increase in our renewals, and I'm sure that you have been able to take a look at this a little bit and have kind of been aware of the market and the situation here in Florida with property specifically. So what you have in front of you is the proposal, the actual renewal quote, which gives you kind of a line-by-line itemization for each coverage line. And then the second page is the name storm deductible options that we're offering this year. So traditionally, our coastal cities will take a 2%, 3%, or 5%. This year, every city, whether it's coastal or further inland, will be at a 5%. And that's kind of the standard property trend. So 5% is what this current program is quoted at, and then you have additional options of a 7.5% and a 10% deductible as well. And then you have the corresponding premium on the property there. So that's that piece. And then the second document you received is specifically highlighting the FMIT and some of the strengths of our program. As a carrier, we are now the only of the three major trusts in the state that are going to continue to offer dedicated limits, which means you don't share a large pot with all other cities. You have dedicated limits. So you all went from a total insurable value on the property of a 3.8 valuation, and this year you underwent an asset survey. So that asset survey is basically an appraisal of all the city's assets. After that was completed, you all had about a 33% increase in those values, bringing your total insured value to about a $5 million number. So you did have an increase just based on the appraisal, the actual values. And then the reinsurance market is the second kind of piece to that increase on the property. So you had about a 44% increase in the overall program. And that's considering the general liability, the workers' comp, the property, the auto, and the title liability as well. So that's kind of a recap. So I can open that up for questions. That's not great news, but this is what we're seeing across the state. This is not specific to just coastal communities. This is a pretty significant market correction.
Mr. Banker? Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. You insure a building, correct? Of what?
Insure a building?
You insure a building, you insure our employees for workers' comp.
Correct.
So our employees receiving a 5% increase were getting hit with a 44% increase on total things. But when you insure, my property insurance should be about the same as what we're getting here. You don't insure the flood, correct?
We have a flood sublimit in the policy.
And what does that cover?
It covers any flood risks that are associated with the properties that we insure.
Yeah, I've been told that 100 times. What does it insure? Because when the flood comes in, okay, then you have to go to the NFIP or your flood insurance to mitigate damages. So I know there's always a disclaimer on every homeowner's policy, 2% hurricane damage, and all that, but what does it truly insure?
So the definition of flood is rising water. So it's from any local waterways. It's also wind-driven rain. So if you have a catastrophic hurricane, what happens with our program is we have synergy, which you all may be familiar with. That is basically our mitigation team. So that third party will come out and do their initial assessments. And once that initial assessment is concluded, they'll determine what percentage of that loss is flood-related. So if there's true surge, like flood surge, coming in from the ocean, that's considered flood. But you also have catastrophic property damage that is wind-driven rain. So it's kind of hard to really know until you look at the loss. But basically, rising water is what's considered flooding as opposed to fallen water, which is your normal windstorm deductible on property.
I understand. I've been dealing with this flood for two years now, and I understand the rising water. But again, when it comes to writing the check for damages, you guys don't write it, the NFIP does, or whoever the insurance that's covering the flood.
Correct.
I believe our, is our building 100% wind mitigated? I don't know if it's 100%. I do have what we pay for the flood insurance policy. Right, yeah, I understand. I think we're being scammed. This whole entire state is getting scammed here because I hear all these percentage increases, and these guys, you guys that write these building insurance policies, you're jumping on the bandwagon of wind insurance, which would have a catastrophic loss, okay? And you would have, the flood policy would have a catastrophic loss. Thank God, not a lot of people claim this year. But your risks are so minimal, in my opinion. If there's a fire, yes, we go to you, okay? If there's a loss of some other type, you know, we go to you. But what are your, what are we really getting from you for 95 total percent increase? One second. Before you go forward, Mr. Banker, I would like for you to carefully ask your questions in a respectful way for our guests accusing, using our guests of scamming us. I'm sure that you would refrain your... Well, I think...
I appreciate it. So your property policy covers catastrophic risk. So when your building is damaged from storms, that's including storm surge, that's including the windows getting blown out, all of the mold that comes into the building, a foot of water that's got to get sucked out and mitigated, the drywall that we have to cut out and then remit, you know, basically stabilize that building until we have the initial assessment to rebuild the building. So it's roof, it's plumbing, electrical, all of that that is, goes into rebuilding that building, as well as contents. So all of the property that's inside of the building. So that's what the property insurance is, and then you have a sublimit within that property that's dedicated to flood, but you also purchase your own excess flood through the NFIP. So at claims time, that initial assessment will determine how much property damage there is and how much it costs to repair, along with the contents inside. And then it will determine what flood is eligible, what flood coverage will be eligible. Because sometimes if it's wind-driven rain through the storm, then it may be considered part of your property loss. It just depends on that initial assessment. So, I mean, it's kind of hard to tell you anything about that. I can definitely go through the property insurance policy and try to find specifics about defining flood versus the rest of the policy's coverage.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'd like to direct other questions to council if we have anymore, and then I would gladly come back to you if you have others. Council? No?
I'll just stay. I'm not surprised at the increases. I own multiple commercial properties throughout the state, and you're just seeing this throughout the state. It's, we shouldn't be surprised at what we're seeing. And I appreciate your help and your efforts that you put forth here.
Sure.
I know we're limited in what we have to, what you have to offer us because most insurance companies pull out the state, and I really appreciate everything you've done.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And to that point, I mean, if you look at what happened in the homeowners market, you have kind of a flight from the state. That's because there is, you know, competition is great, but you kind of get what you pay for. So if everyone's fighting for that cheaper price, cheaper price, cheaper price, eventually what people are paying out, what these insurance companies pay out in premiums, or what they pay out in claims, they're not getting enough in premiums. So that rubber has to hit the road at some point, and with the severity and the frequency increasing and catastrophic risk, especially in Florida, especially with Ian, we took the bulk of that risk. It's going to be about $150 million claim when it's all said and done. Insurance carriers can only reserve for so long and pull from reserves that have been sitting on the books for 10 years before we have to kind of get closer to actual real pricing. So, you know, that's kind of like the NFIP program phased out the subsidies that were involved in that because they were being used all the time, and they need to collect more premium to get closer to the actual risk. That they're gonna, the 100-year storm is becoming a 50-year storm. And because of that, there has to be a correction in market. One other thing is that reinsurance, which funds the entire insurance industry at the very top, that has capital injected into it. And with interest rates rising and inflation, the investors that are at the very top of that system are not getting much done on their investment. So they're going to go and put their capital on other safer avenues and vehicles than insurance right now because insurance claims are all made up. So all those things kind of came together this year. And again, I can send you a great summary of reinsurance. It's really lengthy, but I think it might help put some of this in context, so.
I have a couple of questions. I see that we have $1,000 deductible on our property. Well, that's not a whole lot of money in the grand scheme of things, especially whenever you're looking at this deal. Is there different levels of deductible? And do we have anything we can look at to compare?
Sure, let me look at that pretty quick. So on the property, that was another deductible, okay. So you have, I'm not sure why that says $1,000. I need to check on that. Usually the base is $25,000 as your AOP deductible, which is anything that's not winter storm. So I'm not sure if that might be $1,000 there is for some other, maybe like equipment or something like that. I will definitely confirm that, but I see what you're saying there.
I was actually hoping it was accurate.
Right, and you could save some money with that. I would say the name storm deductible, taking the higher deductible on that, is going to be the thing that moves the needle on pricing. But I will confirm the property deductible for you, the AOP.
Okay, and then yesterday I attended an event, and Jeff Rangus spoke there. And he said that we're, this is a major correction that's going on right now, and that next year it's going to correct some more, but it's not going to be near as serious. And possibly the following year, it will be, it will, it will stay lower and we'll just have normal increases. Do you expect the same?
Yes, I would say that this is not, this will be the most severe year, the biggest correction. Next year, we'll still have kind of higher increases than normal, but then it should start to kind of flatten out. But it is kind of the market cycle we're in, so I can't say for sure. It kind of depends on the storms as well this year.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yes, Mr.?
I'll be moving on page two.
I think this is just a presentation.
I'm just wasn't sure if you had an option to check or reject this.
Yeah, October 1st is the renewal, so you still have, you know, almost a month to make that determination and let us know which one you want to select. If you don't, then it will default to the 5%.
All right. Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate you coming out tonight. All right, we are up to item number seven, the city attorney's report. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are now in September. Last month, I attended the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference and presented on the Four Hour Sunshine Law of its Public Records Course, as well as a presentation on public meetings and efficient operations of those meetings. The conference was generally well-attended, and then I think a tremendous resource, your mayor, was there as well. In addition to that, at present, we continue to advance a series of items. We expect to see significant action items between the work session and next meeting in October, including those, the ballot language that we talked about, which I hope to have for you in terms of workshops, so we can make sure we're comfortable with that content, and a few other ordinances. As we get into October 2023, please be mindful that as you start to see ordinances, the process by which they're presented may change, and is, will start to include that economic impact cover memo that's been required by this legislature. So the process might look just a little different in your materials. Not terribly significant for this community, especially because you do not have any real commercial district or that has to constantly be weighed against all these, but that doesn't mean that exempts us altogether from considering and applying on what commercial impacts there may be based on our ordinances. Otherwise, continue to work closely with the, my office is very closely with Kyle over the last few months on solid waste issue. One of my colleagues, wherever that should go, has been helping Kyle with that, and I know that there will be some discussion of that issue this evening. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Counsel? Yeah. First to 19th Street, our resident Jesus in the town of Bel Air shores from the beach. There is a ordinance passed, I believe this year, limiting our residents owing to use umbrellas in the three-beach access lots. Meanwhile, in that same ordinance, it so states that Bel Air Shore residents are free to put umbrellas, canopies, whatever they like, even on the wet sand, which is state's land. Is that a violation of equal protection for our citizens?
It's my understanding that there were some citizens who were interested property owners who advanced such a claim. I believe that matter resolved without judicial order on the matter. At this stage, I'm not in a position to apply on it. I don't have, you know, I'm generally aware of the ordinance. Whether individual property owners wish to make a claim, that's not really a claim of the city against the town as much as it is individuals against that town and its regulations.
Yeah, I was just concerned about equal protection. I mean, if I'm a resident, I can do whatever I want. If I'm a non-resident, I'm a wet sand, which is the state of, the state of the seabeds. I'm not. I just feel that's an illegal protection clause. And I understand there was a city that was settled, but with the beach now, hardly a beach. The original ordinance was for Satan for umbrellas, not to have any, and we combined all these umbrellas in this one little spot. And at high tide, you may only have 20 feet of beach now. But again, residents of Bel Air shores is allowed to do anything they want when it comes to shade governing or not. I just don't understand how that's not an equal protection violation for our residents.
Okay, I don't, for me, there's not a question in that statement. I understand your concern. I'm not saying it's without merit or it's with merit. I haven't had the ordinance as something that I've analyzed. There's no city of Bel Air Beach interest there, and that's my client. So that may well be the case, and I think private property owners have attempted to or may continue to pursue that action. But as far as, as between city and town, that's not something I'm applying on. And I don't know what their town attorney has applied or otherwise articulated on that point.
I know I've written to Ashley Booty over a month ago, and I still haven't received a response, but I guess I maybe...
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I've actually written to Ashley Booty or the attorney general about this, so I haven't received a response yet, but I was just wondering if you had any legal advice.
I'm not comfortable applying you, just because it's not something I've specifically analyzed. That's fine.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a question. Across the bridge, there is, or was, I think it's gone now, there was a large yacht that sank. Are you aware of it?
I saw it this morning, yes.
Okay, all right. So I've been speaking with several mayors about this, and they all have major concerns. I know that there are certain laws stipulating what we can and cannot do in the waters in our backyard. But we're interested in possibly hosting a gathering here of local officials. I would, I'm wondering if you would be interested in being there in a legal capacity, just to listen to everyone's ideas and maybe sort of keep us from going down the wrong road.
I work for my client. My client is the council. If the council so desires me to attend something, I'm happy to attend that. I would, the only hedges you'll get from me is I'm not sure if you're asking me to advise an inter-local assembly or just advise my client, but I would, of course, be happy to listen to and receive any information, monitor, go in, and then if this community has action and desires to take or had analyzed or proposed, of course, I would fulfill my duties to this council.
Okay, I just feel like that we're going down a road that we're never going to come back from. And I see, last time I counted, I believe there were six boats over here. There may be more now, I don't know. But they're in Bel Air Beach's area.
And that's always a challenge, especially because things in the water aren't always static, and those lines are, so I hear your concern.
And what we're talking about doing is finding a way to, rather than waiting until the boats are derelict, we should be able to prevent them from coming in and staying for any extended length of time. Because you know as well as I do, as soon as they bring their junker boat in and they draw an anchor, if it's really a junker, you don't know it until it's underwater and it's spilling sewer and diesel fuel all up in our waters. So I'm going to speak with the city manager about maybe some dates, and as soon as that comes to fruition, I'll let you know.
Just so I understand, are you talking about like a big C meeting where it's discussed or a separate sort of a date?
This would be not necessarily a big C meeting, but it would be anyone who has intercoastal, uh, direct intercoastal access, uh, from their municipality that wants to.
So, Boston, Bel Air as well, even though they're not.
Yeah, and it may just turn into a giant band session, I don't know, but, uh, if you don't mind, if you could kind of do a little bit of research and, and, and maybe let us know who, who, uh, how these laws are in place and what it is we're, we're allowed to do and not allowed to do.
I think I've got some resources I can circulate that won't require significant, you know, time and, and time to churn that regard to at least start the dialogue, and I can circulate those resources.
All right, all right, thank you very much.
I think, well, I know, at the last work session, I brought this subject up. Um, this is the second vessel in as many months that has sunk over there. Uh, and so, and I believe that at that time, you indicated that you would do some research. I suggested that we look at what Key West is doing, and I know that the city of, I mean, the city of, um, the Deer Beach just made some substantial changes to their code, which is why we're seeing so many vessels up here. But, um, it's definitely a code issue, or I think we need to, and we need to make some modifications to our code, we talked about it at the work session, so I think it's time to get serious about it.
Understood.
Thank you.
Uh, and one last thing is, uh, he did a great job in his class.
Oh, I'm sure.
If you've not seen this guy teach, uh, trust me, it's worth giving up four hours of your life to, to see this. Anything else for Mr. Moore?
No.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, item number eight, City Manager's Report. Mr. Reek, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we'll start off with the budget. We are doing our first public hearing tonight, where we're going to propose, uh, accept the mileage rate and also, uh, approve the, the first, um, annual budget. Related to the budget, I had on here, um, that we, our RFP for the collection services is being evaluated. I reached out to Waste Management and they provided kindly a, another month's service at only, uh, the CPI increase and the disposal fee that, that they're occurring through accounting. That's on the agenda, it's still like, um, that for consideration, because I believe that, um, you know, being the month of September right now, um, we don't really want to rush the process, so we take one rate. Um, we, the one change I do have on this report is we did convene an evaluation committee on Tuesday, yesterday. Um, it was made up of myself, uh, our community services administrator, and a community volunteer, uh, who's the, um, chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, we all reviewed the proposals. I provided a tabulation sheet that I got off DemandStar, which is where we hosted the RFP, um, and you can see, uh, there's some differences in the pricing. Uh, I ran some numbers on that. If you compare the pricing, uh, the lowest price came in from Waste Connections, which was, um, eight-point-six percent over what we're currently paying on a contract. The, uh, second lowest price was Waste Pro, and that was at eighteen-point-nine percent over what we're currently paying. And lastly, Waste Management, our incumbent, came in at thirty-four-point-five percent over what our current, um, contract is. I just want to lay that out for you so you can see the price, because price is important. Um, when we reviewed, uh, the RFPs, we considered all the requirements of the, the RFP, and, um, when I went through it, being kind of laid out how I saw and interpreted the proposals, and, um, when I looked at and scored each proposal, which the one that stood out to me most was Waste Pro, so it was not the lowest price. And, um, I determined that because when you, the price point was a, was a tab, was a tab seven of our RFP, um, so that was just one, uh, consideration. So when I, when it came to, um, the other tabs of the RFP, which included, uh, it included overall organization, um, key players, um, uh, way to address the services of, of Belair Beach, um, tran, transition plan dates, um, uh, handy outreach. So multiple things, uh, were included. And when, when I went through them, what separated Waste Pro, um, out from, um, Waste Connections and Waste Management, um, was the transition plan. If, if we were to consider not sticking with our incumbent contractor, it's important that we have a good transition plan, um, sort of we're confident in that we can make this which would not cause headache for all our residents. And when I compared the plans, I think Waste, Waste Pro really kind of laid out, um, a timeline. They, this is kind of what they've been doing over the last, uh, twenty years, they've done it with over three hundred municipalities. They have backup vehicles right in location, um, they talk about how they're going to communicate effectively, uh, upfront with the residents to make this transition. Um, they talk about how their drivers will, will do dry runs and pickup trucks before even our driving trash trucks. They should go through their software, um, talked about staging areas for dumpster switchouts, uh, they talk about the customer service, um, you know, pretty much by the end of the day, no customer will go unanswered, they set a high standard. Uh, all their trucks are equipped with the latest technology, the onboard, uh, cameras, so they can, if, if there is an incident, they can go back, they can pull the footage from the pickup and be able to tell you what happened that day. So, uh, all the employees are held accountable, um, they identify who, who will lead the transition plan, and, um, they talk about that they, their typical timeline for a transition plan is thirty to forty-five days, but they've done it in as little as four days. And they also say, um, they've already started doing the legwork for the transition, where at the time they submitted this proposal, they were, they were confident in taking over service October second. So, um, when it really comes down to it, that was, that was a very key piece in, in comparing these proposals. Another thing is they were surveying the sixty-one of sixty-seven counties, um, and just overall presentation. So, once I presented this to the evaluation committee, um, there was an agreement that Waste Pro was the best proposal, and we felt that, that overrode the lowest bidder. So, um, the committee agreed that we recommend we go to negotiations, contract negotiations with Waste Pro.
All right. Counsel? Any comments, questions? Um, I, I will let you know, I spoke with Mayor Will today, and, uh, in Reddington Beach, they use Waste Connections, and I will say that, uh, he was adamant about, uh, the company just being stellar. So, uh, there, I, I don't know what else to say other than another, another mayor says good things about this company, so I think I would feel good with either company. It seems that you're, uh, the, the committee was hackish with Waste Pro and, uh, and you are too, so I would be, uh, I would side with you.
Yeah, to echo what you're saying, I spoke to other cities about both companies. They all, it's very competitive, they all are spoke highly of. Um, I spoke to Deer Beach, uh, where Waste Pro does a recycling program, they took over there, um, nothing but good things to say. Um, I heard from City Manager and City of Seminole, they, they're significant because they do both their trash collection and their recycling, and again, should completely satisfy them with their service. So I think, I think all these companies are great companies. On top of that, one thing I forgot to mention is Waste Pro, something that stood out in their proposal is for recycling. They offer at no charge, uh, the, I think the fifty-eight? Or sorry, sixty-four gallon recycling carts. They'll do our vending service, what we currently have, but they'll offer no charge, you know, like the medium-sized recycling carts, they'll offer the residents more space, and their, their strategy is, um, they can automate it, and at the same time, they found that that reduces the amount of recyclables that just go into the trash anyways, when you run out of space, if they call it diversion, so the diversion rates, they define decreased, but, or, uh, sorry, the diversion rates with the transition, they lower by thirty percent. So, that's another thing, it's something we can consider, we don't have to go to the carts, but I know in the past RFP, I reviewed the notes, when we considered going to the large trash carts, and the concern was that elderly citizens of Belair Beach would struggle with such a large cart. But these, I think, are workable, um, they're kind of a medium-sized cart, and, and you know, if you use the recycling bins, you can't really fit that much in there. So I think that's a, that's a plus.
Would they recycle my existing car?
We probably, we probably could take it back at the city.
I have a concern, you, you mentioned they're automating, so are they, is that true for the canisters as well, because one benefit we have is that, you know, our current vendor has guys on the ground.
Right, and they, and they will provide.
But they do an excellent job. I just want to make sure.
But yeah, they will, they will pick up any container a resident uses, um, but they, they will also transition to a trash cart if he ever decides to, if they do, either way.
Well, let's find out what the council thinks. Mr. Baker?
Are they going to give the same type of service for, um, land skating like we have now, like palm branches and everything like that? Most of our residents don't tie them up. There was a big thing about four years ago here with Waste Management, they weren't going to pick up anything that wasn't funded, that lasted about a week. I think Lane couldn't turn his front hall, he got so many calls, and then they went back to, you know, just picking up, I guess some of these people just put piles and piles and piles out of all, fifty types of shrubbery, it's not bound up. Will they give us the same type of service?
So when we did the RFP, we didn't put any stipulations on how the yard waste went out there. There were some questions, um, that we said that would be negotiated through the contract. So our intention is not to have any, anything just too limiting to the residents, because we're aware of the way the yard waste is picked up. And we talked about it in the evaluation committee, we believe that when it comes down to it, they're going to want to serve the customers, so I don't think it's going to hang up.
I think you should know what you're doing.
Yeah, no, it, it will be.
Ms. Livingstone?
If the group and Kyle agree that Waste Pro Florida is the way to go, then I'm agreeing as well.
Ms. Mayor Shirley?
Just another, uh, question regarding, um, the storm dumpsters, when, you know, when the time comes that we have, um, any or additional dumpsters and things like that, is that additional charge? Is that part of the original contract? What happens?
So in our last contract, that was worked out during the negotiation, so it was written in the third yard loss, the full complimentary.
So they were included in the contract, is that what you're saying?
They're included, yes, and, and when we negotiate the contract, then we present it to the city council, and you guys will, with the other people down.
That's a pretty big backup.
Ms. Farrell?
Currently, we have all the condos along the west side of Flora, you have, um, fenced, fenced-in little things where they have their garden dumpster, and then one where they have their recycling dumpster. Are the ones for these other, um, vendors the same size?
They proposed all the same size, they were given a list in the RFP with every condominium and what they used, um, and they proposed all the same sizes and that they would, uh, use plastic, I believe, to try and reduce the noise. I don't know if you currently have plastic. They, they proposed plastic dumpsters because they thought it cut down on noise in the residential area.
How do you feel about utilizing Waste Pro Florida?
I'm very good with Waste Management.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think any company, if they can provide the level of service that we're getting now with Waste Management, I think, I, I believe this council would be satisfied with that. All right, so we're going to vote later on extending their contract for one month, and what, what does that do for us? It gives us the enough time to vote in next month's meeting to approve the contract?
Yes, um, so if you approve me to go to negotiation, I'll set up a meeting with Waste Pro, and we'll throw you point of our proposed contract and, uh, see if there's any changes that want to be made, or what we want to include or drop off, and then I will share that with Attorney Morris Firm and, uh, Attorney Asher Felder, and come up with a contract that, that we feel will serve the residents, and that will be put on a meeting agenda for your approval.
All right, do we need a motion for that?
Uh, I just need, uh, the approval from council to go to negotiations.
Let's just, uh, let's do a motion right there. Would someone like to make a motion to, uh, move forward with creating a contract?
I have another question before we move to that. And it's, with regard, we went to bid, took this up to bid, I'm not hearing anything, any reason why we wouldn't take a little bid, other than we just have this comfort level. And if we're looking at, I think I need a better argument why we wouldn't look at a little bid.
Um, when the evaluation committee reviewed, we thought it was a standout difference in what was presented, what was proposed. Like I said, the transition plan, if you read one plan versus the other, you look at about ten times more information presented and just explained, uh, due to a lot of the confidence in that they're going to pull off what they're saying.
To better communicate the, the entire process.
Better overall proposal, better order, um, less errors, I mean.
Okay. So, yes, I'll move forward with a, with, uh, I guess we'll have to try and split my, um.
Would you like to make a motion to move forward with Waste Pro Florida?
I would like to move forward with a motion to, um, to enter into negotiations with Waste Pro Florida on behalf of the city of Belair Beach.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay.
All right, so, um, three more items on the report, Gulf Boulevard Undergrounding. We had a slight delay from a storm, so the, the UCF was going to finish up in the month of August, but they're about a couple of weeks back, so we're expecting September. There'll be probably one more invoice on that first phase one, um, PO, and then what I'll just submit it to the county as, you know, the whole PO for reimbursement from Penny Ford canals. The stormwater improvement projects, um, I've been working, um, back and forth with Seminole Septic, who does, uh, our cammering and our cleaning of the pipes. Right now with a tight schedule, I'm looking at getting them in, hopefully to get a lot of the video footage of the pipes, um, that we wanted to assess on, um, September eighteenth. So I'm going to get with Gemini Engineering, hopefully I can get those videos to them that they can still be able to evaluate them and make it to that, that next meeting to give us the answers that we wanted, um, as far as the conditions in place. But that's just a tight thing. One thing I wanted to find out, uh, because it is a price point, the, there's pipe that doesn't have any, uh, particle buildup, oysters in it, um, that could be just filled with a camera truck, no problem. There's the pipe segments that go from the closest inlet to the seawalls, out to the seawall, are going to need cleaning to be videoed. Um, the project proposed, originally I thought was that we're going to have a, a line on a price for the cure and place lining, so that when we go through on the project and clean and inspect the pipes that as needed, if we found damage, we would line it then. and inspect the pipes that as needed, if we found damage, we would line it then. It's, it doesn't have to be done that way, but it will increase what we spend right now on the budget. So I wanted to know if, if we felt it was pertinent to move forward and start cleaning the pipes now and inspect them and then we'll be doing it later. Not sure how the council felt about that.
Council?
We've got to clean them. We're not even, I get the garbage pieces. I think they should be cleaned. So just clean your video? It might slow things down a little bit, hopefully they can get it done with tight schedule, but.
I wouldn't be able to see any surprises like we did during the last, twelve and thirteen.
Okay. All right, I'll do, I'll move forward to that. And then lastly, that's personnel manual, which we have the second reading of the ordinance and the resolution to adopt.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for the city manager?
Your, your field crew work like dogs, getting the city ready, sandbagging. They put in long, hard hours in the sun and heat. And I would think this council, we should give them, those three guys, a $230,000 spiting bonus for their recognition for doing this. They were out there for hours, collecting their own homes and that, and just some kind of appreciation. So I'm making a motion, I think it's appropriate, for one time, $230,000 each spiting.
Do I have a second?
Before we, before we proceed on the motion, I want to make sure we're just, and, and Mr. Baker, just because I wasn't aware that we're making that motion, I do want to add, there is a statute that says that in the Florida Statute 215 dot 425, no extra compensation shall be made to any officer, agent, employer, contractor after the service has been rendered, the contract made. Marshals are going to be appropriated, paid on the claim subject matter of which has not been provided for by pre-existing laws. Suffice to say, there are, there is some, some authority against extra compensation to employees for performing their duties. I, I have an obligation to raise that as, as a concern. I'm not saying this falls squarely within it, but I, I wasn't aware we were going to be having that discussion or what the personnel policies might otherwise say on the matter.
Wait, I think under 215, I have a front.
I'm sorry, we're, we're not able to discuss this because the motion is not in second. Was there a second at all? I'm sorry, motion dies. Thank you for the advice, Mr. Moore. All right, we are on to item number nine, which is the city clerk's report. Ms. Chetra, you have the floor.
No report this month, mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the city clerk? All right, we are on to the consent agenda, item number 10. This is for approval of the August seventh, twenty twenty-three city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion made by Leslie Natero, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Shirley. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. Now we're to public hearings. First is item eleven. This is consideration of ordinance 23 dash zero three. This is the second reading. City Attorney Moore.
Yes, this is ordinance 23 dash zero three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, amending the city of Bel Air Beach comprehensive plan pursuant to the evaluation and appraisal process of section 163 dot 3191 Florida statutes and the amendment process of section 163 dot 3184 Florida statutes adopting new goals, objectives, and policies amassed as presented here and below, providing for a copy to be kept up and filed, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances and afford therewith, and providing for an effective date. This has been the second and final reading of ordinance number 23 dash zero three by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Anyone like to speak on ordinance 23 dash zero three? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Before we continue, I'm going to be a motion to adopt ordinance 23 dash zero three.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Natero. Vice Mayor Shirley, you have the floor.
I have nothing to add. This is a housekeeping thing that I need to get taken care of.
Thank you, Ms. Shirley. Any other comments? All right, Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye, so passes unanimously. Ordinance 2023, amending the comprehensive plan passes. And I take it that it was published, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, we're on to item number 12. This is consideration of ordinance 23 dash zero four, also a second reading. City Attorney Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance 23 dash zero four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, repealing previously adopted versions of the city's personnel manual, providing for the creation of chapter two of our before division one, section two dash one forty-three personnel policy manual, making provision for the adoption of amendment and personnel policies via resolution, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This is the second and final reading of ordinance 23 dash zero four by title only. As, as previously presented, mayor, this adds language to your code contemplating the adoption of personnel policies by, personnel policy manuals by resolution. There will be a separate resolution to follow on the agenda concerning what would be adopted. This is really just making it explicitly clear how the personnel policy is adopted and repealing any previous ordinances to the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Seeing as there are none, says comments are now closed. Let's see, I'm going to need a motion to adopt ordinance 23 dash zero four. Motion made by Leslie Natero, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Livingstone. Ms. Natero, you have the floor.
No further comments.
Any other comments from the council? Nope, all right. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. Again, unanimously. Ordinance 23 dash zero four, repealing previously adopted versions of the city's personnel manual is approved. And that one was also published, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, we are on to item number thirteen. Consideration of ordinance 23 dash zero five. This is a first reading. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance 23 dash zero five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, amending chapter eighteen, section eighteen dash five of the city's code of ordinances entitled Time for Qualifying, removing the specified qualifying period, providing for the established minimum qualifying period by resolution of the city council, providing for the incorporation of recital, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This has been reading ordinance 23 dash zero five by title only. Substantively, what this ordinance does, council, is it, your code presently has a defined qualifying period. Were we to follow that chapter inverse, it would fall, it would put the qualifying period after the period, the deadline, to identify qualified candidates to the supervisor of electors. And in this current year, it would also have the qualifying period fall over the Christmas holiday and weekend. What this would do is rather than have something defined by ordinance that's a little less flexible, have it that we will adopt a resolution annually that calls for the election and in that resolution set forth the qualifying period.
Thank you for explaining that. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Seeing as there are none, citizen comments are now closed. I'm going to need a motion to adopt ordinance 23 dash zero five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley? Should I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Natero. Vice Mayor Shirley, you have the floor.
Nothing further to add.
Any other comments from the council? Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. This one passes five to zero. Ordinance 23 dash zero five, amending chapter eighteen, section eighteen dash five of the city's code of ordinances. Right, and that is the first reading, so we will do this again next month. All right, now we are on to item number fourteen. Consideration of adopting the proposed ad valorem millet rate of 2.039 mill per fiscal year 2023, 2024. This is a first reading. City manager, Reefer.
Thank you, mayor. So the preliminary gross taxable value came in at 809 million approximately, and that is a 10.85% increase over the final gross taxable value of the 2023 year. Staff is proposing that we set the final ad valorem millet rate at 2.0394. The budget that was presented to council and that we've held two workshops over was predicated on that millet rate. The, the millet rate of this, of the 2.0394 will produce approximately $1,585,000 in net ad valorem revenues, representing a $155,000 increase over last year's revenues. The department of revenue requires the city to calculate a rollback millet rate. And the rollback millet rate is defined as a millet rate that would generate the same amount of ad valorem tax revenue as was levied during the private, prior year. The rollback rate is calculated at 1.8494. So the proposed millet rate of 2.0394 is 10.27% higher than the rollback rate. Staff has respectfully requested the council to set the proposed millet rate at 2.0394 mils.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Any comments? Citizen comments are now closed. I'm going to need a motion to adopt the proposed ad valorem millet rate of 2 dot 0394 mils for fiscal year 2023 dash 2024. Motion made by Leslie Natero, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Shirley. Ms. Natero, you have the floor.
I have nothing to add. How was this explained? Isn't this mandatory? We should go forward with that. Same rate.
Any other comments?
Yes, I don't think we need the 2.0394 and to confuse the rollback rate. We have a, we had $250,000 generator we were budgeting for, we never spent that money. I don't believe we need $100,000 for a vote. It's about time we'd be sending this money back to the citizens and not support the 2.0394.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments? Seeing as there are none. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes, so the motion carries four to one. And that was the first reading. All right, now we are on to item number fifteen. This is for consideration for approving the city of Bel Air Beach budget, making appropriations for certain expenditure. I need to go back, I forgot to read something very important. We're back on item number fourteen. I'm supposed to read this. The proposed millet rate of 2 dot 0394 mils, which is higher than the rollback rate by two, or 10.27%, is to fund the expenses of the general fund for fiscal year commencing October first, 2023, and ending September thirtieth, 2024. The final approved millet rate of city of Bel Air Beach will be presented at a second and final public hearing that will be held on Monday, September eighteenth, 2023, at 5:05 PM. All right, now that we've got that out of the way, we're moving on to item number fifteen. Consideration of approving the city of Bel Air Beach budget, making appropriation for certain expenditures, expenses, capital improvements, and certain expenditures for the year beginning October first, 2023, and ending September thirtieth, 2024. This is the first reading of the budget. City manager, Reefer.
Thank you, mayor. So I did compliance with the charter. I prepared and submitted to council the annual budget for fiscal year 2024. I held some individual meetings, one-on-ones, and then we had two budget workshops that were on June nineteenth and July seventeenth. Since then, we've made some changes and amended to produce the draft that is presented today. And the staff respectfully requests the city council to approve the 2023, 24 budget, including the capital plans.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Anyone like to speak? All right, citizen comments are closed. I'm going to need a motion to approve the city of Bel Air Beach budget for 2023, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Natero. Vice Mayor Shirley, you have the floor.
I think we've already budgeted and we understand what would approve you or not approve you here, and thank you for all your input.
Thank you. Do we have other comments?
I, I think the budget should be looked at and examined before. I just raised $350,000. I came up for good prices.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any other comments? All right. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye, the motion carries four to one. The, the. Sorry about that. I have to read something else. The final approved budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024 for the city of Bel Air Beach will be presented at a second and final public hearing that will be held at the community center on Monday, September eighteenth, 2023, at 5:05 PM. Held on Monday, that's weird, it's written twice. Okay, well, I read it. And now we are on to the regular agenda, item number sixteen. This is for consideration of resolution 2023 dash zero six. I'll give everyone time to find it. It was item number fourteen. All right, Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is resolution 2023 dash zero six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, terminating the state of local emergency in Bel Air Beach declared by a resolution of the city council due to tropical storm Adelia slash hurricane Adelia and its threat of harm to the residents and property of the city of Bel Air Beach, providing for an effective date of termination. This has been a reading of resolution 2023 dash zero six by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any citizens like to comment? No comments? Citizen comments are closed. I need a motion to approve resolution 2023 dash zero six. Motion. Motion made by Frank Baker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Shirley. Mr. Baker, you have the, the motion speaks for itself. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any other comments? Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye, and I'm very happy that resolution 2023 dash zero is terminating the state of local emergency passed. All right, now we are on to item number seventeen. This was item number fifteen. item number 15, consideration of Resolution 2023 dash zero seven. Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Uh, this is Resolution 2023 dash zero seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, adopting a comprehensive personnel policy manual, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. Um, as you, uh, this has been a first reading, or this has been the, the sole reading of Resolution 2023 dash zero seven by title only. As indicated earlier in tonight's hearing, you adopt, you adopted the ordinance that provides you can adopt your personnel policy by resolution. This is that resolution, and behind it are the materials and the agenda are the personnel policy that you will be adopting pursuant to the resolution. This has been reviewed by my office, the manager, and your carrier at various stages in this process to provide a unified personnel policy rather than two or three separate documents that govern the employees, and it's offered this evening for your proposal. One of the benefits of where you can, and not everything can be done this way, but where you can have things that are not codified and done by resolution, one of the benefits to that is if there are things we need to amend, it's as simple as a resolution at a later date. Um, if we need to change a number, a figure, a part of a policy, it can be changed by resolution at a later date without two hearings and ads and all that stuff. Um, when you're talking about internal policies, resolutions are preferred where the law permits it and it is permitted yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's go to the citizens. Uh, we have no comments. All right, citizen comments are now closed. Need a motion to approve Resolution 2023 dash zero seven.
So vote.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Natero. Vice Mayor Shirley, you have the floor.
I have nothing further to add.
Any other comments?
Just for the record, this is the personnel manual that we would be voting on, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, Kyle, like I said before, the ad valorem milled rate, I cannot support this. There should be a just pause, the county may report this.
Thank you, Mr. Bankard. Any other comments from the council? All right, Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
No.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. Resolution 2023 dash zero seven, adopting a comprehensive personnel policy manual passes four to one. Uh, the good news is, is if the council decides they don't like our list, now we only have to do a resolution and make a change. So that's a, that's a good thing. All right, we are on to item number 18. This is for authorization of the City Manager to execute a purchase order for a one-month extension of solid waste collection services. City Manager Reifler.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as I mentioned earlier in the City Manager Report, uh, we kind of came up on the time, or the deadline for the proposal submission. Uh, it was requested that they have, the contractors had more time for a proposal submission, and to make that possible, I reached out to the waste management, our current waste collection contractor, and the government affairs, uh, manager, Tim Bowers, had, um, you know, gracefully, uh, worked with his, his superiors to extend our contract for the month of October, and only at the increase of the 4% CPI and the balance accounting solid waste disposal cost. So it, it's a very good price, especially a lower price than any of our RFP contract prices, and, uh, I still think that we should take them up on this, uh, this amendment to the agreement, uh, to, to provide service for the month of October.
Thank you, Mr. Reifler. Uh, citizens, any comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Tim Bowers. I'm the governmental affairs representative for Waste Management. Uh, I'd just like to say that Waste Management is very appreciative of the relationship that we've had with, uh, Beller Beach. Uh, and I realize that, as we talked to City Manager Reifler, uh, and going through the RFP process, they, we were looking at an extension, uh, and we took everything into consideration, the relationship that we have, uh, and we just basically applied a 4% increase, which covered a pro, a CPI, uh, and, uh, the disposal rate. Again, we realized the city was going through the process. We wanted to put our best foot forward, be a good partner, uh, and that's why we, we kept, we kept it, uh, at a reasonable rate, uh, for the one month extension, because we wanted to make sure that you got the best deal and that you had the time you needed to take a look at everything you were looking at in solid waste. We, we just really appreciate the relationship we've had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from citizens? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Uh, I need a motion to authorize to extend solid waste services for one month. Motion. Motion made by Mr. Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Livingstone. Mr. Bankard, you have the floor.
I think it should pass. We're sure we all went trash power for a month.
Any other comments? All right, uh, in that case, um, all in favor? Aye. Can you oppose? All right, we're authorized, Mr. Reifler.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 19, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Nope. All right, well, we will move right on to council comments. Uh, this month, we'll begin with Councilmember Natero. And Councilmember Robertson, make it, and Mr. Bankard, you're up.
Thankfully, this storm, uh, just had, uh, did do severe damage. Thank God. We lost, you remember, it was at least a hundred miles off the coast when it came up. Uh, I did stress in stormwater pumps. I talked to a couple contractors. Could bring in some pumps here, um, do some catch bases. It could cost around $40,000 with like four streets, but, um, we also, I would've been addressing, we should be raising some of these seawalls. I mean, it breached the seawalls, this past storm, and, um, it was a mess down here. Just thankfully, not a lot of houses got ruined. I thank God for that. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bankard. Up next is Ms. Livingstone.
I just wanted to thank, uh, Ms. Tim Kelly. You, um, provided a lot of communication to us during the, during this morning. I, for one, was not here. I'm sorry to appreciate your communication and all the thanks that you did in saving jobs. So, thank you very, very much, and thanks to all of us that we've been able to work through this.
Thank you, Ms. Livingstone. Up next is Vice Mayor Shirley.
I agree with what everyone said. You guys did a great job. City staff did a wonderful job. Um, I also have to put a shout out to the Sheriff's Department. They were on every street the other day, you know, I stayed and kind of knocked on my door asking, you know. So, I appreciate y'all's concerns and, um, all the hard work. There was a lot of presence from the Sheriff's Department and our party department. Um, I wanted to just kind of reiterate with the question of whether or not we could give bonuses to staff and that sort of thing. Well, I think it's a great idea. I just want to remind residents that they believe staff's doing a good job, that nothing prevents you from giving them a gift card or something like that, so to show your appreciation and a thank you card. Um, even just kind words go a long way. So, uh, just add that to, um, a thought for the day, and, um, thank you, uh, to the residents that attended, and I appreciate everything.
Thank you. All right, um, today, I attended the Mayor's Council in Ellis County, uh, where we met for lunch, and, uh, a representative from the Florida League of Cities was there to answer questions concerning, uh, current and future legislation. Uh, I asked if there had been any consideration of overturning the full financial disclosure law for municipalities in general, and were they aware that, uh, of the impact it was having on small municipalities, municipalities like Beller Beach. Uh, the expected answer was no, but it kicked off a heated discussion, um, about council and commission members resigning, as well as the quality of future members who could just walk in unopposed. I will continue to have this conversation whenever I can, but unfortunately, it may require a judge to undo this damaging law. Also, this Friday, the Big C mayors and county commissioners will meet with the Army Corps of Engineers to discuss regular and emergency beach nourishment. I'm confident there will be plenty of press coverage on this one, so stay tuned. Uh, also, we went through 20 agenda items in less than an hour and a half. I don't want anyone out there to think that we just glossed right through these. Um, every item is, is discussed, unless it's just a standard housekeeping item. We, we do our own work and, and the hard work during work sessions, and if you'd like us to, uh, would like to see more of how we reach our decisions, I would advise you to attend our work sessions. Uh, so, uh, as always, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight, either here or remotely. Uh, a motion to adjourn. Motion. Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, the Livingstone. All in favor? Aye. Can you oppose? All right, good night, everyone.